This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we have the oath of office for Sharice Ash. Sharice, if you want to raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sharice Ash.
A duly elected city councillor of the city of Vernonia.
A duly elected city councillor of the city of Vernonia.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Vernonia.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Vernonia.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
Of city councillor of the city of Vernonia, so help me God.
Of city councillor of the city of Vernonia, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm very honored and excited.
All right, Rick. Your turn.
Okay. Thank you, Stephanie, and just hearing that swearing in reminded me of when I swore in, and it's quite a moment I'll never forget. And so I know you always, as you go through your terms, Sharice, you'll always kind of remember that that promise you made, and I hope so anyway, and it just, as you get into your 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 volunteer work here in the city, you're going to learn a lot, and so don't ever forget this last minute you did, so.
I won't, thank you.
I will now open the regular December 6, 2021 council meeting to order. I'll call it to order at 7:05 PM. Meeting called to order. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight?
I have one addition. It'll be new business A. It's a special event distillery application for the OLCC.
Okay. That'll be new business letter A. I also have a new business item, be letter B. Discussion about returning to in-person meetings in the chamber, so that'll be addressed in new business, letter B. Any other corrections or additions? Anyone like to make a motion to accept the agenda tonight with the two additions in new business? Councillor Webb?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We accept the agenda as written with the addition of new business A, the OLCC permit application, and B, the in-person council meeting discussion.
So moved, Councillor Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councillor Ash. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Councillor Webb?
Aye.
Councillor Allen?
Aye.
Councillor Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councillor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Are there any presentations tonight? None. Okay, I'll move right into my mayor's report. It's just a short one. Discussing our process on Saturday, choosing a new councillor to fill the vacancy for Grant Williams. Couple of things, I just thought it was a really good process. I felt the, all the applicants were were and interviews went really well. And it's just another process that we use to to keep things going, if you will, and I I was really impressed with the way it was. All the questions and and all three candidates did a really good job, and it was a hard decision. I want to congratulate Sharice again for being chosen. I also want to take this opportunity to publicly thank Charles Kibbin and Susan Wagner for their participation. Everyone did a great job, so thank you. I want to give a big thank you to all. Thank you. Well, I'd like to move right into the public hearing. It's now open for the purpose of considering the adoption of ordinance 934. An ordinance vacating a platted and unbuilt street and alley west of Louisiana Avenue. The procedure I would like to follow tonight is in this manner. I will read the disclosure statement. We'll hear the staff report. And then after the staff report, we'll hear a public testimony. And then I'll close the hearing, and then we'll have city council deliberation. So I'll read the disclosure statement now. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this hearing of December 6, 2021, to order at 7:10 PM. My name is Rick Hobart. I am the chairman of the city council for Vernonia. Our role is to conduct public hearings and to make legislative decisions about land use matters in Vernonia. The item before us tonight is a legislative item. Members of the city council are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, I will ask the members of the city council whether they have any potential conflicts, such as family, financial, or business relationship with regard to the land in question. If such a potential conflict exists, I will ask whether the council member in question believes he or she is without actual bias, or whether he or she would like to step down during the case review. A copy of the rules of procedure for the hearing, the agenda for today's hearing, and copies of the staff report are available upon request. Any person with an interest in today's agenda item may offer relevant oral and/or written testimony. But please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. It is also important that you make your best case to the city council, because although all of our decisions are subject to appeal, any such appeal will be heard by the Land Use Board of Appeals, and they will decide the appeal based solely on the evidence in the record before us. Please make sure your testimony is relevant to applicable standards for the item in question. Please do not repeat testimony offered by yourself or earlier witnesses. If I think your testimony is irrelevant or repetitious, I may interrupt and ask you to continue with another subject. Demonstrations from the audience are prohibited. Please refrain from them. Comments from the audience will not be a part of the record. Are there any questions? That concludes the introduction. Does any city council wish to declare any potential conflict of interest? I see head shaking no. Okay. Then with the staff, please proceed with a summary of their report.
Good evening, mayor and councillors. Welcome, Councillor Ash, to his first public hearing. I'm Carrie Brennicky, I'm the Contract City Planner here in Vernonia. What you have before you is file VAC 21-01, which is a request by Mr. Strickland to vacate a portion of an unconstructed street and an unconstructed alley west of Louisiana Avenue. The alley is to be vacated is north of the address 1977, and the street to be vacated is south of the same address. So the applicant is applying to vacate the portions of the street alley adjacent to his property due to significant topographical constraints. That makes both the street and alley unbuildable currently and in the future. The street is proposed, the street proposed to be vacated drops approximately 100 feet in elevation over a distance of 300 feet from the eastern corner to the western corner of the applicant's property. The alley portion is a drainage ditch that is too steep and is unusable and inaccessible. It also drops 100 feet in elevation. The applicant is proposing to vacate the 60 feet full width of the street right-of-way and the 15 feet full width of the alley right-of-way along the full length of the property, which is 300 feet. The purpose of the vacation is to release the unbuildable right-of-way to the adjacent property owners, so it can be dedicated to their properties for their use. The property owners north and south of the applicant have signed consent forms acknowledging they are aware that they will be gaining property if the vacations are approved. None of these vacations will create a buildable lot. There's a number of findings we need to make when we vacate streets and alleys. The first one is, are the adjacent properties aware that they're gaining property? Yes, they are. Mr. Strickland has submitted evidence of that. The other thing that needs to be done is we need to get basically property owners' consent of two-thirds of the real property in a certain area around the streets that they vacated is 200 feet north and south to the nearest right-of-way or to the nearest right-of-way and 400 feet east and west. Mr. Strickland has submitted these consent forms from two-thirds of the property owners, so he has satisfied that criteria. The other one is, vacation must not eliminate public access to infrastructure, such as water, sewer, or stormwater. In this case, none exists because of topographical constraints. They really can't build water, sewer, or stormwater lines on that right-of-way. The other thing to be considered is, does it eliminate access to another parcel or parcels surrounding the area? And this it doesn't. There's maps and photos in your packet regarding this. But basically, no access exists to other properties because it can't, because of the steepness of the slopes. The right-of-way just is not accessible. The only thing it could possibly impact is if a street were to develop to the north of them, if there was an alley to the south of a street, but alley access isn't required and also isn't really used that often when people are building new homes in Vernonia, so it won't be an issue. So the other thing to consider, will the vacation inhibit future development of infrastructure? That also won't happen because of the topography. The only thing I would note in the findings is there is one we need to make, that the vacation must not be noted on the Vernonia transportation system plan and any vacation zone on the TSP must have a plan amendment. The right-of-way is shown on an amendment to the TSP back in 2011 as a possible soft-surface trail connecting different areas. Staff took a look at this. The topography wouldn't really allow this trail ever to be built. It is too steep. And a trail has already been built to access the same areas, so it's sort of, it's noted in the TSP, but it still, it was never feasible, and it would never be used as a trail because of the topography. But I wanted to point that out, that that is a criteria. That vacation won't inhibit the free flow of traffic because people can't drive cars off cliffs. And if anything, it won't impact wetlands or natural resources. If anything, it will help preserve the hillside that exists. So with that, staff recommends that the city council approve vacation 2021-01 and the ordinance implementing it. I'm available for any questions. I don't want to go into too much detail because there's a lot in this staff report, but if you have any questions, let me know.
Well, thank you, Carrie. Are there any questions from the council? Comments or questions before I open it up for public testimony? Councillor Webb?
Yeah, just a comment that I'm really appreciative of our process here. I know how the vacation process used to be years ago, and this is, this is so much more check-the-box and keeps us from making mistakes. But my other comment, though, is this placed quite a burden on Mr. Strickland. Looked like he had to do a lot of legwork to flesh this all out. But I guess that's the price for gaining that parcel of land, so.
Thank you, Councillor Webb. Any other questions or comments for the staff? If not, I would like to open it up at this time for public testimony. Does any member of the public wish to speak or present testimony on this agenda item? Okay. If not, we'll move right into, I guess I'll close the public hearing, Stephanie, right? And if there's no other public testimony or questions, I'll close this public hearing at 7:20. Public hearing is now closed. Since there weren't any further comments or questions from the city council, would council like to entertain a motion to vacate ordinance number 934-21-21? Vacating a platted and unbuilt street and alley.
The motion that I would ask for would be to approve VAC 21-01 with the conditions and to approve or to adopt, sorry, to ordinance number 934 as titled.
Okay. So that was VAC 21-21, Stephanie?
21-01.
Oh, 01, okay.
I can make that motion, mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Allen.
I'll make a motion that we adopt VAC 21-01, ordinance number 934, vacating a platted and unbuilt street and alley.
So moved. Thank you, Councillor Allen. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councillor Webb. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councillor Ash?
Aye.
Councillor Allen?
Aye.
Councillor Norman?
Aye.
Councillor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried. Would any councillor wish to hear ordinance number 934 ready full? Hearing no such request, this is the first reading of ordinance number 934 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating a platted and unbuilt street and platted and unbuilt alley west of Louisiana Avenue and east of the unbuilt Columbia Avenue, north and south of Tap Spot 4N, 4W, 04, AC, 01, 600 at 917 Louisiana Avenue. And this is where, if you want to do it in one meeting, you can ask for a second motion. If not, I'll bring it back at the next meeting.
What's the council's wishes? Councillor Webb?
Yeah, I think we should go ahead with this, so I would make another motion that we I don't have the number in front of me here now. Adopt the VAC 21-01 and and the ordinance number 934 as titled.
Thank you, Councillor Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councillor Ash. Would you call a roll, please, Stephanie?
Councillor Webb?
Aye.
Councillor Norman?
Aye.
Councillor Allen?
Aye.
Councillor Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Would any member of the public body wish to hear the ordinance read and full? Hearing no such request, this is the second reading of ordinance number 934 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating a platted and unbuilt street and platted and unbuilt alley west of Louisiana Avenue and east of the unbuilt Columbia Avenue, north and south of Tap Spot 4N, 4W, 04, AC, 01, 600 at 917 Louisiana Avenue. This ordinance will be effective in 30 days.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good job. Lots of hard work. Thank you, Carrie, also.
Staff will be in touch with you, Mr. Strickland, tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate I guess everything that you guys have done and all the hard work. I know some of you have put in as well. Thank you.
We have the easy part, David.
Yeah, it was a lot of work. Took a while, but I just kept at it little by little, so.
Well, your perseverance paid off.
Thank you, I appreciate you. Nice to meet, nice to meet all the council members as well, too. I know Stephanie already, so.
Nice meeting you too, Mr. Strickland, and you're welcome to stay on the meeting, but whatever you desire.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I find it quite interesting, so.
Yeah.
Check it out.
That's fine.
All our meetings are open to the public.
Excellent. I'll be, I'll be staying on.
Good. Are there any council committee meeting reports tonight? Councillor Webb?
Well, I don't really have a meeting report because I was too tired from elk hunting to make it to my assigned meeting there. Last Tuesday, I did talk to George and got a little update with the they basically just kind of did some in-house updates, so getting our latest member up to speed. I've had a discussion with him the other day on the streets of, you know, we need to start picking kind of the forward direction for the Public Works Committee what topics we need to start tackling, so. Hopefully now that we got a quorum there again, we can start moving forward, start flushing out some more of the city's public work issues, so. That's it.
Thank you, Dale. Councillor Allen, I saw your light flash.
Nope.
Oh. Okay. Are there any more committee meeting reports? I do not have any. Okay, well. Oh, go ahead, Councillor Norman.
I do not have one.
Okay. Are there any topics from the floor tonight, Stephanie? None, okay. Cassette agenda for acceptance. Parks committee meeting minutes for October 2021. We'll also do cassette agenda for approval. City council meeting minutes for November 15, 2021. Any questions or discussions of those two meeting minutes?
I did have something, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to find it on the Parks meeting. Looks like it's yet to happen. What is it under? Action Item Summary? Looks like they're asking for Josette and Stephanie to attend the next meeting.
I saw that in December.
Yeah, and having a few questions, and you know, that kind of ties in with the, once we ever get out of this COVID situation, what we want to do if all of our committees, have, have them all together and kind of have a general, you know, meeting and some consensus on kind of the expectations and and, but I see they're expressing some concern about and it, you know, it's not really explained very well. Members have, when they choose not to follow recs, which I am assuming are recommendations, what procedure is, or we want a process for this, or our opinions, so, or options, I mean, so. Anyhow, yeah, she, Stephanie's got her hand up, so, yeah, I want to see where staff's moving on this.
Go ahead.
Josette did attend their next meeting. She attended their meeting in November. Usually either Josette or I are at their meeting, but she attended that one because they wanted clarification on the recommendation process of what recommendations would go to council and what recommendations are more staff-specific, you know, policy versus maintenance items. So that has been addressed with the committee.
So their concerns about options when things get denied is, was there a good discussion around that?
So kind of a brief overview of it was, there were members of the committee who thought that sorry, that their recommendations are direction and that they're not necessarily making recommendation, but they're telling staff or council that this item needs to be done. staff or council that this item needs to be done, wherein some things that they have wanted can't be done, and so staff denies it and has given an explanation of why that was denied, or that it wasn't going to move forward, and they didn't like that because they thought that what they said goes. But that has been flushed out with the committee and explained to them that's why Josette attended the last meeting, so that it was coming from her and not from me, because typically responses come from me to them, but it's a joint response. I'm the one sending it, but Angie and Josette are CC'd on it, and they also contribute to the response. So it's not just from me, and so that has been clarified with the committee. So I think there were some misunderstandings around that.
Okay, good. I just, you know, I mean, I know that's a touchy subject because people, and that's part of why we want to have that one meeting and also our liaison process to kind of head off some of these misadventures. If we're starting to go down the path, liaisons reporting back to council, then council, if they're seeing something they don't want to pursue, we can terminate that fairly quickly and not have people too invested and spend too much time on something that council's not going to support, and I think that's really important feedback. I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot of times there's financial concerns or liability concerns that we have to take into consideration where maybe a board may not be in. Or the feedback of, well, if you want this, then show us how you're going to pay for it, or something like that, so. Yeah, I don't want to disenfranchise any of our volunteers because I've been, I've been on that side and, and you don't want to be, keep getting shot down. I feel like you're just spinning your wheels and not getting anywhere, so, but you have to. So Bruce and I used to say, we throw them a bone to chew on, it's a bone everybody is willing to, you know, it's in everybody's interest here, so. All right, enough of that.
Yeah, I got some comments. I was reading through the meeting minutes and they weren't, it said one time that they were not informed about the town hall meeting, and you know, I, even though it was a public record, it was printed in the voice, and we put it out on our website, of course, and, but I think part of the problem was, you know, Grant served on the Parks Committee as a liaison, and and after his passing, we, and this is something we're going to have to address here shortly, because they don't have a liaison right now, and I think that's part of the problem when there's no liaison, it, for two or three months, you know, things don't get communicated very well back to the council, so. We might, you might put that, we might put that, you know, in the next, maybe in the next council meeting for, on the agenda to discuss Parks liaison, too.
I can certainly bring that forward. I had assumed that Charisse would take that position since that was Grant's committee, but if you guys want to switch things up, I can certainly bring that forward.
Yeah, I think we should at least address it.
Okay. I'll bring it forward at the next meeting.
Yeah. Any other discussions on these two meeting minutes? Okay, anyone want to move to accept these two meeting minutes? Counselor Webb?
Yeah, do you want to do them both, Stephanie, or should we do them separate?
You can do it together.
Okay, I'll move that we accept the Parks Committee meeting minutes of October 2021 and the City Council meeting minutes for November 15th, 2021.
Thank you, Counselor Webb. Is there a second?
Counselor Norman will second it.
Thank you, Counselor Norman. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Is there any unfinished business tonight? No unfinished business. Moving right into new business, letter A. OLCC permit for, I believe, this coming Saturday, December 11th, from, I believe it's 11:00 AM to 5:00 AM. Do you want to talk about that more, Stephanie?
Yes, that is correct. So the application is from Kildare Distilling. They want to have tastings during the Spirit of Christmas in Renonia, and it will be within the Grange Building. This is being brought forward to you as they have not received one from the city before, and before Chief signs them, he likes to have council's approval.
Did everyone? Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Allen. Oh.
I believe that was Chief.
Oh, Chief, I'm sorry.
I don't have any history with these guys, and the paperwork seems to be filled out properly, and I don't see any reason for denial at this point.
Okay, thanks, Chief Connor. Did any, everyone get a chance to look over the application? Stephanie sent it out in email form today, this afternoon. Okay.
Is it in the packet?
No, it was not. It was not in the packet, Charisse. It just came out today via email.
It wasn't a.
She's not signed in yet.
Yeah.
Hey, I have a question for the chief when you're ready.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Allen.
I have not seen the application. I do understand it's coming as part of the Spirit of Christmas. Chief, are you going to have an officer on duty that night for the whole time?
Yeah. Yeah, there'll be somebody there. They're only going between 11:00 and 5:00, and we'll have somebody on duty until well after the parade.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion or questions for staff? Counselor Webb?
Yeah, back to the chief. We've had these before, applications just for tasting, and then I think they sell bottles. Any of the other outfits that have done that, I think we had one during Jamboree a year or so ago. Have we had any issues with that?
None at all over those, when the distilleries have come in, we've had no issues.
Yeah. That was my impression, too, so.
It doesn't really sound like there would be a lot of volume consumed on-site if it's just tasting and the bottle sales to take home.
Yeah, that's correct. There shouldn't be, anyway. No guarantees, but there shouldn't be.
We will need a motion to approve this applicant. Counselor Webb?
Yeah, I'll make a motion that we approve the OLCC permit from Kildare Distillery, I think I believe it is.
Okay, you want to acknowledge that, Stephanie? Was that a proper motion? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Counselor Ash. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. New business, letter B. Back and in-person meetings of all kinds, workshops, council meetings. I'd like to make that motion. I don't get to make motions too often, so I'm going to make a motion that we we return to in-chamber, in-person council meetings, starting with the next council meeting on December 20th, 2021.
I'll second. I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Second's been made. Thank you, Counselor Webb.
We do need to have a discussion, though.
Okay. Yeah, I'm a, go ahead, Counselor Webb.
So, we've been here, I think, a couple of times now. We do have to remember our city administrator. She's not here tonight. You know, her medical condition may preclude her from being able to sit in if we have large audiences. I know that was the case in the past, and I can't speak for her now, but that was, that was kind of the stumbling block for us at times of going back to in-person. We're all aware we're required to wear masks if we go back to in-person.
Yep.
So, I think we'd be able to do, if we did have a lot of people, which is, luckily, it's a, well, I don't know if it's lucky, but it seems to be the norm unless we have a hot topic. So, and probably 90, 95% of the case of our meetings, we're probably going to be able to have the city administrator there. I mean, I think with our new system, she can stay in her offices, she has to, and so I don't know, I'd like to hear from staff if they have any other further concerns, or if they'd rather be that way, too.
I think we've had, since we've had several work sessions in person as well as interviews, I don't have any issues with having them in person. If it becomes an issue, we can require the audience to attend virtually. I'll still put the go-to meeting on the agendas and encourage people to attend virtually, which more than likely, that's how they'll do it anyways. So I think we can deal with it as it comes if it's necessary.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any other discussion before we take a vote?
Counselor Norman here.
Counselor Norman.
I, I'm in the dark tonight. The computer says I don't have no internet or Wi-Fi connection, so luckily, I'm logged in on my phone, or dialed in on my phone to stay in on this meeting, and it's hard sometimes to understand what people are talking about on the internet. I would like to be back in chambers.
Thank you, Counselor Norman. Well, there's been a motion made and seconded, so I think we could take a vote now if you guys are ready.
Mayor Holbert?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm good with it myself. I would like to hear from Counselor Ash, her thoughts before we go to vote.
Yeah, I have no problem at all with meeting in person. I do think that, as Stephanie said, encouraging audience people to attend virtually is a benefit, but I have no problem meeting in person.
Okay. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Hey, Counselor Norman?
Aye.
Counselor Webb?
Aye.
Counselor Allen?
Aye.
Counselor Ash?
Aye.
Mayor Holbert?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving right into ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 935. Granting a franchise agreement to Zipley Fiber can be found on pages 84 through 95 in your packet.
Okay, what you have before you is a franchise agreement with Zipley Fiber. This franchise has been worked on through the last several months with Zipley and City Legal, and it has been approved by both bodies to come forward for approval. So. It has been approved by City Legal.
Any questions or discussions?
I have one, Mayor.
Counselor Allen?
This is for staff and council probably to consider, but I've reading that we're charging 7% on top of everything, so that does increase the cost to our citizens, 7%. What is the projected revenue of that per year for the city, and what's the money going to be used for?
So franchise fees go into the general fund, and it is the same percentage that Blue Mountain pays. Fairly certain it was the same percentage as before. I would have to double check.
What's the projected revenue?
I have no idea. I'd have to look. Let me, one. Bear with me. If it's the same percentage as before, our projected revenue this fiscal year is $8,700.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion and questions on the franchise agreement? Anyone like to make a motion to accept the franchise agreement to Zipley Fiber? Counselor Webb?
Yeah, I'll move that we approve ordinance number 935 as titled.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Allen seconded. Thank you. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Mayor Holbert?
Hi.
Councilor Allen?
Hi.
Councilor Webb?
Hi.
Councilor Norman?
Hi.
Councilor Ash?
Hi.
Motion carried. Would any counselor wish to hear this ordinance read in full? Hearing no such request, this is the first reading of ordinance number nine three five by title only. An ordinance of the city of Renonia granting to Zipley Fiber Northwest LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, DBA Zipley Fiber, a franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications network within the city of Renonia, Oregon. And again, if you guys want to do it the second time, we can do that today.
Councilor Webb?
Probably be wise to do so. Um, I would once again move that we approve ordinance number nine three five as titled.
Thank you for that motion, Councilor Webb. Is there a second?
I'll second again.
Thank you, Councilor Allen. I had to pick these. If we need them. Would you call the roll, please, Stephanie?
Councilor Webb?
Hi.
Mayor Holbert?
Hi.
Councilor Ash?
Hi.
Councilor Norman?
Hi.
Councilor Allen?
Hi.
Motion carried. Would any counselor wish to hear this ordinance read in full? Hearing no such request, this is the second reading of ordinance number nine three five by title only. An ordinance of the city of Renonia granting to Zipley Fiber Northwest LLC, a Delaware limited liability company, DBA Zipley Fiber, a franchise to construct, operate, and maintain a telecommunications network within the city of Renonia, Oregon. This ordinance will become effective in thirty days. And JR, real quick, I pulled up the Blue Mountain franchise, and theirs is also seven percent.
Thank you.
Okay, moving to another resolution, number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one initiating a temporary temporary fee in lieu policy for required frontage improvements for new residential development. Ninety-six to ninety-seven.
I have a comment, Mayor, when you're ready.
Go ahead, Councilor Allen.
I would ask that the council consider a continuation on this for a couple of reasons. Um, we have a new counselor now. And I still believe we have not had a workshop to really flush out this particular language. Um, I think we worked harder on the parking than we have on this, and I think this is a bigger issue before we tack on thirty thousand dollars for someone that has a hundred foot frontage. That's not it. There's language in here that I don't like. Uh, talks about building any structure, so if you built a shed or a barn or whatever, it's gonna hit you the same. I was wondering if that's gonna affect tiny houses as well. The whole point of that was to reduce cost of housing. I think this is driving cost of housing in Renonia up even higher. So I would just ask council consider that we hold at least one workshop on this before continuing.
Councilor Webb?
Yeah, I have a few concerns, too. I I went back and reviewed all of our audio recordings when we were discussing uh this subject, which the subject is you know, there's been times where there's been confusion. Uh, we're talking to sidewalks and sidewalks, gutter and curb. Uh, there was talk from staff of talking about using SCA and gas tax monies for paving. Uh, left an impression during that meeting that some streets we would leave gravel. Uh, you know, I I think all of us at times didn't think that paving was also part of this. I mean, there's times we've just been talking specifically sidewalks, so um I know in our, if you want to go back for references, we had discussions on four or five of this year. You can listen to that meeting. Um, and and we've had some waiver remonstrances in those meetings, which is also interesting to see how they applied um on our April twelfth meeting. Um, it did appear we agreed that we were gonna rip the Band-Aid off with a fee in lieu exemption process for the one offs. That was that seemed to be the consensus of council. But I'm also concerned is my take on it and what the other fellow counselors take on this is we were in a process amending Title Nine. And that was what we were saying, yes, let's move forward ripping the Band-Aid off. Uh, which is for Mr. Strickland's listening there is requiring that half street improvements would be made on on the any constructionist town that under these new rules under Title Nine, they would have to meet those. Which in some cases is a house burning down or somebody tearing down demo in a house and building new back new construction, so. Um, so and we had another council meeting on four nineteen for the reading of this sidewalk proposal. Um, we and then we've we set, we had a meeting on it, and then we we set a May third reading of the sidewalk proposal, and that's where I interjected again, we needed something or at least um, you know, those those one offs that were maybe a sidewalk in the middle of a city block that is already built out and has none of these amenities. What's that look like? Is that really what our vision is? Um, so at that meeting, it was basically explained to us that we were, they were just staff was just looking for us to forward to the planning commission to start the process Title Nine amendments there and to have them take this into consideration. So again, I think we had agreed to rip the Band-Aid off, move this process forward. But also, there was basically some some exemptions that we realized there has to be something in there. Uh, I think that's the big, the biggest thing we have struggled with. So during that same meeting, and this is the one that it flew by me because um, I don't know my poor hearing, or I was thinking what I was gonna say next. Uh, Stephanie announced there'd be no more waivers up on the Louisiana um project. And there wasn't one of us to question that. And in re-listening that, it's kind of startling. Um, so, and I know I was back in the office a week or two later and and understood where that came from. Um, I don't know if us saying we were ripping the Band-Aid off helped spur that, or if it was staff reinterpreting Title Nine um that that spurred that. Now, that's placed us in this situation that we are, we have adopted formally, the city has, that we are enforcing um, what's in Title Nine. And there's, other than the two qualifiers, I believe, if I'm correct, Stephanie, the the fully build out qualification and three hundred feet from the nearest sidewalk on either direction. Um, that's the only thing that could give somebody a waiver remonstrance, correct, Stephanie?
Um, it's topography and, yes, the level of development around them and if they're sidewalks or not.
So we could still give under that circumstance a waiver of remonstrance?
Only under those circumstances.
Only under those circumstances.
Very hard to meet.
Right. Which again brings up, okay, three hundred foot. Is that a parallel sidewalk or a perpendicular sidewalk? Any sidewalk? You know, is is that spelled out in Title Nine, or is this left to us to interpret and implement?
It's in there. Let me let me pull it up real quick so I can actually tell you verbatim what it says.
Well, while she's digging it up there, I'll just kind of continue that.
I found it.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, construction of sidewalks is not feasible due to limiting physical conditions. Um, and then all property within three hundred feet on each side of the side lot line of the property for which the building permit is issued is fully developed. And none of the fully developed properties have sidewalks.
So if they're within a corner, if they're within three hundred foot of a corner lot that has a sidewalk on one side, regardless of which side, that would still be, that would disqualify them, correct?
If there are sidewalks within three hundred feet of a side property line, then they have to.
So anyhow, um, I don't know what the rest of the counselors. And I know Donnie was new to this process, and he wasn't even on board at that time, and these decisions were made, so. And now we have Sharice, so um, it's it's a difficult situation for the other two counselors. Um, but for the three of us there, it was my impression we were moving forward with the process. I don't know that we ever officially gave um, a blessing to change policy. But regardless, we have changed policy. We have construction that is conforming to these standards now, so um, with what we just fleshed out here as meeting requirements, we've always talked about doing the fee in lieu. And that is, I guess, the third third option for people. Um, I do have concerns like JR does. Um, I know this is interim policy until Title Nine goes through the process with how we change it to make this permanent. But that could take quite a bit of time. And there could be a fair number of people impacted in in that time. I'm concerned about fairness. Uh, if we build in the Title Nine, my vision of what I'm looking at, and I don't know what yours will be, but if we you know, and how we discussed this in the last meeting was if some of these amenities are in place, we wouldn't charge them for that. So I don't know that it's fair to tell somebody you have to pay two hundred ninety feet per linear foot just because they're missing one of the amenities. Say they had gutter and curb and pavement, they didn't have sidewalk. It seems to me like it needs to be prorated to what they don't have. Um, because it sound like if somebody had all three of those amenities, we would not charge this fee, this fee in lieu if the house burnt down and they were replacing it. I don't know how we could if they, you know, for example, the city administrator house burns down, would we? We saw I I I agree with JR. I think I think we need to flesh it out, but I think we also do need to adopt something. Um, because right now, we the people don't have a third option that is maybe or an option that would be viable. If they don't meet the current exemptions, they only have one choice, and that's the fully build. And I still believe in certain places that's not appropriate. And um, so we need to have that, and we need to do this fairly quickly. I'm done.
I um got something to say. Um, yeah, I I remember back in April and and May, you know, the direction we were going and ripping the Band-Aid off, and I like Dale said, we pretty much had a general consensus, that's what we were gonna do. We are getting faced with all these uh waivers or of remonstrance. And decided that, you know, for the long range forecast, it's better to maybe come up with a different plan. And you know, a couple of options, including the fee in lieu came before us and and we the way I understand it, that this resolution is just a resolution, is just a temporary um avenue, if you will, to keep going in that direction. Um, it seemed to work pretty good in McMinnville. They they use it a lot. Um, if I remember right, the example that was given to us from McMinnville. I don't see anything in this resolution that the only thing I see is it concerning uh new homes. I don't see any sheds or anything of the sort like that. I just see new construction, new homes. Um, but there seems to be more questions and and so I guess one more work session would would be Hovis. Get the other two counselors on board, maybe, or a little bit what's going on. Go ahead, Sharice.
Um, yeah, I would I would personally definitely love that because I feel like this is a super complex issue. I've heard a little bit at some of the meetings um since the summer, but I wouldn't feel ready to personally vote on this. So I think that would be really helpful.
Mayor Holbert?
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Allen.
If you look in the first paragraph on page ninety-six on the resolution that we're supposed to adopt tonight, on the third sentence, it says, construction of any new building or structure. I believe it would be a structure.
Yeah, I see it.
Then if you look on the very bottom line, about right in the middle of the page, it says the funds could go to street sidewalks and or other related frontage improvements. What's an other related frontage improvement? That's really vague.
So that would be if there was uh near to be, so where are you?
Page ninety-six, very bottom, right in the middle, last sentence.
Uh, curb, planter strip. Those will all be included in that.
Well, I could say that could it wouldn't just say related frontage improvements, right? And then another thing, we talked about the city having plans ready for these people. Let's say I build a house, I walk down there, I say, oh, you gotta do this or pay thirty grand. Let's say I build a house, I walk down there, I say, oh, you gotta do this or pay 30 grand. Okay, I'll do it. So give me the plans. Well, we don't have the plans. Well, what's the standard for the street? Is there a sidewalk and curb connected? Is there a mow strip? We don't even have that.
We, we do have that. It's in the public works standards and the transportation plan.
I thought we were talking about a doc, uh, uh, um, in our walk in August or something up there, we were talking about revamping all that because we didn't have it.
New, new updated ones. And fur- further adding those design diagrams in the public work standards.
Okay, so the width, the width of the street determines the mow strip?
Yes, it, it depends on what kind of street it is. Is it arterial? Is it a feeder? Is it?
And we have all the ADA standards to hand them in a design package. Here you go. This is what you need to do.
It's all on the website. And when they apply, they get to talk to our engineer about it.
So, sorry, I have a hard time hearing. You said they have to consult an engineer?
Our engineer consults with them about it. And it's on our.
Is there a fee for that consulting?
Yes, you have to have, you, you apply for a permit and pay a fee to do any work in a right of way. It's part of your, when you build a new house, you have a right of way and a grain and erosion and a sidewalk and driveway permit. It's all included in that. But yes, more than likely, they will need their own engineer as well.
Okay, because see, I was probably one of the stronger supporters of starting to get sidewalks in our community. But when it starts, when it started, all of a sudden, curb and gutter and, and, and half-street improvements and. The costs skyrocketed. It just kind of caught me off guard and I. Um, plus with the new counselors, I, um, I'm definitely in favor of a, a, a three-hour workshop session on this at a minimum.
Yeah, if, if. I'm not against having another work session. I would like to have the city planner, the city engineer and the city attorney at that work session. That way we're not doing the back and forth and trying to find answers and hearing different stories. That way we're all there.
Exactly, and I'm not, and, and don't take it, since I'm on the phone, I can't see you guys, but don't take it as I'm, uh. Uh, upset or putting down anybody's work on this, uh. It's just. As a counselor, it feels like it changed so much and there was such a time period between. Uh, conversations that. It just seemed prudent to, uh, slow down for a second and talk through this as a group.
Yeah, no, I totally agree. I live and breathe this stuff and we've had tons of, uh, meetings at the staff level with the city attorney, engineer and planner. Um, I'm perfectly fine having a work session with all of you guys there, so.
Counselor Norman. Oh, you, you put your thumbs up, okay.
Well, I would be for another meeting.
Okay, it sounds like we have a general consensus to. Not, uh. Move on this, to accept this resolution tonight and to. Push it out to a, a workshop. With engineers and attorneys and, and our city administrator for one too, so.
Okay, let me. If it's a, okay, well, I'd like to reach out to, um, all of our third-party contractors. And find out what their availability is for a regular council meeting day or Monday, um, and then I'll bring it to you guys to schedule if that works.
Bring it to us on the 20th?
Yes.
Okay.
Stephanie, do you need a motion to table?
If you wouldn't mind, uh, just a motion to table until after the work session. Because we don't have a date certain.
I can make that motion. I'll make a motion that we table resolution number 2021-21 until. After we've had time for a in-person workshop.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Sharice. Call the roll, please, Stephanie.
Mayor Holbar.
Aye.
Counselor Ash.
Aye.
Counselor Allen.
Aye.
Counselor Norman.
Aye.
Counselor Webb.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Is there any correspondence tonight?
Nope.
Done. City Administrator Report. Last page. Stephanie, are you gonna present that tonight?
Um, unless some of you haven't had a chance to read it, I'll just leave it as it is.
Okay. Has everyone read the report? Okay, are there any questions for Stephanie? Discussion. Counselor Webb.
Um. Refresh my memory if you can, Stephanie. I know Josette. I can't remember. Did they get their acoustic readings in the senior center?
Yes, they did, um, and the. The acoustic panels have arrived and are being installed.
So, yeah, I see they said within the next two weeks, so. So, yeah, maybe we'll. Maybe by our next meeting, we can have a result of those efforts.
I would expect so.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I got one there.
Go ahead, Counselor Allen.
Stephanie, I, under Anderson Park Restrooms here. It states that we are waiting for our contractor to schedule. Why can't they just give you a date? I don't understand that. I've never had to wait for a contractor once a signature is signed for a date. It's been a couple of weeks now.
We actually heard from the contractor today and they're going to be doing the installation or. Application, um, the week of the 20th through the 22nd, or 23rd, sorry.
Oh, great.
Two weeks from now.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anything else? Counselor Webb.
Uh, where are we on planting trees up at Bomar? I, we got, didn't we get some stock, uh, in to be planted?
Yeah, that I don't know.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything about it in the office. I suspect that there hasn't been movement since we talked about last time. I'll save it right, I don't know about it.
Okay.
Uh.
Okay.
I got one more thing, Mayor.
Go ahead.
Um, the last. Report that's in here from the city administrator. Talks about the museum. And it says in there that we don't have funds. Well. Council had decided that we could match funds with the county. And try to get that back while fixed, so I guess I must have not been able to hear my hearing over the internet, but. Why was that just dropped that we don't have any funds when we have all kinds of funds coming in?
I don't believe it was dropped. Last I heard, uh, Josette and Toby were looking for a grant. That would pay for that specifically, like a historic preservation grant. Because those funds are out there.
What's the timeline on something like that, though?
I do not know.
Okay, I will, um. Come down and talk to Josette when she gets back to work.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right on to items from counselors and the mayor. Counselor Webb.
Well, like a welcome aboard our newest counselor. Looks like you're gonna fit right in. Already seconded motions, you'll, next meeting you'll be making them, I'm sure. Don't be afraid, we don't bite.
I'm not afraid. Thank you.
Um. I, I know, I know the feeling. It's like, oh, I want to make that motion, but I don't want to mess up making it, you know, and we'll coach you through it. It's no, no problem. Um. I'd like to, uh. Our city administrator's going through a tough time right now. Knowledge that and, uh, hope we all can. Um, I know we're all chomping at the bit to talk to her and, uh. She's probably gonna be a little overwhelmed coming back to work by a lot of irons in the fire. Well, we know there's a lot of irons in the fire and. And, um. So. I hope we can all show a little bit of restraint, give her a breather here to. Get her feet back under and get rolling again. She'll be right back in the fight. Um. Condolences to her family, so.
Thank you, Dale.
Been a tough year for us all the way around.
It sure has and. Um. You know, we, we've had a lot of. Vandalism and arson and. And, uh. Lot of new things we've been presented with in the last year. But going back to the. Vandalism and the arson and I've, uh. Kind of taken it upon myself to, to, uh. Well, I met the district attorney last week and we met for coffee at the Black Iron Grill. And I've been in contact with him over. What's been happening in our community and it's, you know, it's, it's all over the nation and it's. Over in our county seat and there's breakouts and. Lot going on, um. I've decided to meet with the chief, uh, Connor once a week and. You know, get on board with what's going on in our community a little bit better and, um. Like I said, I met, uh. District Attorney from Clemmie County and his name's Jeff. I can't, I have a hard time pronouncing his last ni- last name, but Oxyer, something like that. But, uh, real nice fellow, young fella, and really wants the best for, uh, Clemmie County and. I believe he wants to help in keeping our citizens safer and. So I feel good about that and. I think communication is the best thing we could have. And, uh. Oh, we're all here for one purpose or we have several. Things that we, but one of them is to keep our citizens safe and so. I take that to heart pretty good, so. Anyway, it's nice to have Chief Connor with us tonight. I don't think he has a report, but. Glad you're with us tonight, Chief, and keep up the good work. I know we're running kind of thin, but I, I think the, uh. Sheriff Office has helped us quite a bit the last couple of weeks, so. You want to make any comments, Chief? Go ahead.
My internet's not working real, real good right now, but the only real update that I did have and after, you know, we met last week. Um, I also need to speak with the district attorney a little bit as well. I tried to get an update on the Miles Brock case, the individual that vandalized our, our building there. I wasn't able to get one today as I wanted to know if there was any movement on that case since we had spoke last. Um, subject is still in jail, uh, multiple charges including criminal mischief, multiple charges of criminal mischief, burglary in a second degree. Interfering with governmental administration. Um, there might have been one other one in there, but there's, there's several charges that are, that are still pending and it hasn't been completely adjudicated yet. And as far as our hiring process is concerned, we've only still got one applicant.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Anything else?
I've got a couple of things, Mayor Holbar.
Okay, Counselor Allen.
Uh, this is probably for Stephanie. She might not know, but I'm curious, has there been any movement at all on the skate park? Have you heard?
Yes, last I heard, uh, Ruben was working with Wendy. On the contract, the MOA. Or MOU, I don't remember what the acronym is. Which one it is?
Contract, oh, language contract to put out for bid?
No, no, that's up to them. Um, the memorandum of understanding or agreement, I'm not sure which one it is. Uh, there is a timeline in there for the city to install the stormwater. And Wendy was working on that with, uh, Ruben.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you. And, and I understand the city helped, uh, plug in some, uh, holiday lights today. Did that happen?
I don't believe that happened today.
Do you have an update on when it was rescheduled for?
I hope that it'll be tomorrow. Um, I know staff went out to start the project and there was an issue with some of the city decorations. Um, and the decision was made just to wait rather than to have the guys go out there twice. It does take a considerable amount of staff time and that's really not their. Most pressing thing that they need to be working on, especially when it's a fairly thin staff right now. Um, and so.
It's on the radar though, right?
Yeah, it is on the radar and ultimately if the committee or group wanted to do it themselves, they can plug them in themselves.
Yeah, I don't know. Okay, then my, another thing, question I have for staff, did, did West Oregon Electric receive their, uh, thank you basket?
I have not heard anything about a thank you basket going out to West Oregon yet. It was a holiday basket though, so maybe it's just that it's gonna be close to the holiday. I'm not sure. But I can look into that tomorrow.
Okay. That's all I had. Thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Counselor Norman, I saw your hand raised.
Yes, I, I'm gonna put my foot in my mouth again, um. It seems like West Oregon doesn't seem to get our streetlights fixed or anyone who pays attention to what ones are working or not, uh. I guess I'm gonna have to take a night shift and do some documentation for them.
Counselor Norman, that's already in the works.
Perfect, because I see many of them coming on and off and not working, so I'm glad somebody's working on it.
I believe Randy Holtz is going around and getting us, uh, poll numbers and he'll send them back to us and we'll get with West Oregon Electric to get those repaired.
Okay, thank you.
Are they supposed to go on and off?
Not at night.
Well, mine's done that for two years and I called it in two years ago and they said it was fixed and it still does it, so I thought maybe that was just normal.
That, that's been kind of a problem over, over the years. As we say, one of them's out, they go out and look and it's working at the time that they're there and then it doesn't get replaced.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, we do pay $50,000 a year for streetlights in this town, so. We do want to get our money's worth.
I think I can count six of them on Main, well, from Mini Mart. To the Green Bridge is not working correctly.
I think Randy had a count of close to 17, I think. Yeah, I, I got tasked with that, too, and I forgot to mention it, so. Thank you, Donnie, for bringing that up, or Donald.
Okay, well, I was, now I don't have to stick my foot in my mouth because it's already been taken care of, so that's great. Anything else?
Yeah, I also wanted to, uh, welcome, uh, Counselor Ash to council and look forward to working with her for the next year or so at least, or at minimum. So, welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Were you ready for an action item summary, Stephanie?
I am.
Okay.
Down this time. Uh, staff will bring forward, uh, report to discuss committee liaisons at the next council meeting. Staff will sign the OLCC permit. Uh, city council will be meeting in person from now on. Um, staff will work on scheduling a sidewalk work session. And staff will look into having the holiday basket sent to West Oregon Electric.
Perfect. Anything else? We might have forgotten. If not, I'd like to thank everyone for their involvement with the meeting tonight and, and, um, good first meeting and congratulations on your swearing in again, uh, Charisse, and so, um, I will adjourn this meeting at 8:35 PM. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.
Put on your snow boots.
Oh, no, it's too warm.
Next week, buddy.
Okay, we'll see.